Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for Janice Day, a former elementary teacher here, and Heda Lopez, the mother of Regina Rondina. This is the October 23 meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. We will start with a motion to approve the bills.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous. And we have reviewed and seek a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 10.
I'll make the motion we approve.
I'll second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous. It's okay. It's okay. We're kind of about kids here. That's all right. Do we have a student representative tonight?
Hi, Sam.
Good evening, Sam.
The ACTs will be offered at CHS on Saturday, October 28. There will be a spirit rally at CHS on Friday, October 27. The homecoming football game will be played on Friday, October 27. And the homecoming dance will be held at CHS on Saturday, October 28. The first robotics kickoff meeting will be held on November 1. And the blood drive held at CHS on Friday, October 13 raised 73 units total. So Spirit Week will begin at CHS on November 22. As a part of Spirit Week, the canned food drive has raised over 17,000 pounds of food since I started school as a freshman, and over 5,000 pairs of hats, gloves, mittens, and socks have been donated. We look forward to helping our community again this year.
Sam, did you say 17,000 pounds?
Yeah.
Wow. Congratulations to you and your fellow students. Do we have anyone from the PTA tonight?
I just wanted to thank everyone for an awesome event on Saturday, Ghosts and Goblins. We had a couple superheroes there and lots of kids, a great representation from the high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools of teachers who either volunteered their time, just came to the event to enjoy it, or ran the event, a bunch of M&amp;Ms, those preschool teachers, man. The kids, we had almost 40 volunteers of students from the high school, the track team, field hockey team, soccer team, the step up, is that what it's called? Step up with this ball? So there was a great amount of kids. It was so good to see all those orange shirts everywhere volunteering. Our next event is Mom's Day Out on November 18. It is at The Strand. It's from 2 to 5. There'll be a movie, Bad Moms, and there'll be some vendors for, from Lip Scent's, Monet, Rodin &amp; Fields, Lily's Boutique, and Traveling Vineyard, all residents of Clinton, parents, anyone, they want to donate their time, and all proceeds go to the Clinton Public Schools. Our next meeting is November 16. It is a Thursday night at the Clinton Middle School in the library at 6:30. We have a few more things. December 8, we're having a Paint Your Own Pottery Night at the middle school. We have Paint Your Own Pottery from Northborough coming in. It is a family event. We will have, they can choose ornaments to paint with their, we're going to have it from elementary age up. The little ones can come with their parents and paint. Some of the older kids can come and do it themselves. Everything gets brought back to the pottery place. They fire it, they return it labeled, and it goes to all the schools. So I'm excited about that one. The gift card program, we're going to roll out again at the Mom's Day Out event and then get that passed out all before Thanksgiving. And then we have our gingerbread shop the week of December 11 through the 15 at both the elementary school and the middle school. And we're just putting it out there, too. We really, really, really want some more parents to join the board, so we're trying to, I've been looking, we've been looking at different PTOs, PTAs, and I know in Lancaster they have a teacher board and a parent board. So we're trying to kind of mimic that for next year. We love, absolutely love doing this, but we just really want some more, like the Ghosts and Goblins committee, we're trying to get them on board, to be on the board with us. They did such an amazing job planning that. And that was probably the hardest event that we planned. So if they can do that, we'd like to see, or any parent, we're totally putting it out there for any of the parents.
So how should parents get involved? How best to contact the PTA?
We do have a PTA email. It keeps changing, so the best way to contact us is at the middle school. Our school email address, Kate Moran, Christine Zankgraf, Helen Carrigan, or Sam Gamache, the middle school emails are all the same, the @Clinton.
Yep.
So that is the best way.
Also, the next meeting would probably be.
And come to the, yeah. Yep.
Okay. Please extend our thanks to everyone involved in your board and, you know, responsible for just a wonderful day on Saturday.
It was. Whoever was playing that music, it was phenomenal.
Thank you.
Anything from the special needs pack tonight? Nothing at this time. Okay. And CTA? Thank you. Is there any public comments? Mr. Julio?
I just wanted to mention that Miguel Cudero, custodian at the elementary school, has put together a program for the people of Puerto Rico. So on Saturday, for Beadix and Miguel, his wife works there, and through all the children and the parents of Clinton Elementary School, they donated a tremendous amount of woods that went down to Connecticut. And those who will be shipped over to Puerto Rico, they have given a U-Haul truck, you know, to put it all in. And Miguel took his own time on the weekend in order to do that, but through everybody, Megan sent out emails, we sent messages with one out, other parents, and we had a lot of great donations from him. But it really just says exactly what our town and our schools, districts are made. When they need, people come together. It's a fabulous thing. It does not matter. So congratulations to everybody that's here.
And again, please extend our thanks to everyone involved in that noble effort. So this is one of those meetings where we get to recognize some achievement, and we're going to start with a donation. Mr. Superintendent?
Yep. So I guess, Robin, you want to tell us a little bit about the Ween Foundation donation?
Sure. A little more than two years ago, I received an unsolicited phone call from the Ween Foundation, and they said, "We'd like a proposal for what you need for new instruments and your wish list." And well, I don't know, when parents many times ask us they'd like to make a donation, how much does that really mean? Does it mean $100? Does it mean 500? Does it mean 1,000? So when talking with them, you know, they said, "Well, what do you need?" And I thought, "We have a lot of stuff. We have an aging fleet of instruments. We have more kids coming into the program, more kids in talent that want to play that maybe don't have the means to get an instrument." And so they gave me an idea. I asked them kind of what they had funded from other organizations. So my preliminary proposal was $4,300 last year. And last year, when all of a sudden I contacted them and said, "You know, where do we stand with this?" And they said, "We're going to give you $7,500." And I was like, "You got to be kidding." So I had to get my list, because I don't remember this one off the top of my head. But so last year, we were able to get one piccolo, which we didn't have a workable piccolo at the middle school. We have one at the high school, but not at the middle school. We're desperately, our trombones were in bad, sad shape. They'd seen better days. Three new trombones. We never have enough alto saxes, and again, some of them are older. One alto sax, our tenor sax is again a little agent. And their tenor saxes and the bigger instruments are expensive for me, Yamaha tenor sax. One brand-new bass clarinet that is just phenomenal. One euphonium. And this is a huge trophy. Some of you might know it as a baritone horn. This is the one we got last year. I just, tonight, I thought, "Maybe I should just bring one over here so we can see." This is a euphonium. That's like $1,600. And to think that we put one in a child's hand and say, "Here, please." And because it's so big, some of the kids can't take them on bus. Some of them, parents pick them up. Some bus drivers, there's a little bit more room on the bus, and they're a little bit more flexible, maybe the inflated band has served it before. Sometimes I have to give a student one for home and one for school, which is, we're talking about $3,200 just for one student, you know, to be able to participate in our program. At times we give them an older one for home and a newer one for school. But with the euphonium, all the cases are marked. So every one of our school instruments, whether it's been donated because somebody didn't want the instrument anymore, we mark it with property of Clinton, Mass Public Schools, and the serial number on it, so I can quickly identify each child who uses the school-owned instrument, signs a contract, their parents sign the contract, that say they may use it for as long as they participate in the band program. We've had some kids play senior graduation and then say, "Thank you, Mrs. Whitehead, Mrs. West, here's my instrument back." And it breaks my heart to do that, but then it cycles down, so I'm a little afraid of it. So that was last year. We get nine new instruments. So this year, when I talked with the foundation, and I said, "Gee, I'm a little behind, you know, and we've really got more kids than ever signing up the last few years. We've had about 32, 33 beginners. This year we have 49." And I'm going, "I don't know if our alto sax and player is going to last." And trombones, what's the other instrument? Saxons are a big concern this year. And they said, "Not quite sure what I gave you for list." And they said, "Guess what? We lost your paperwork. Just tell us what you need, and we're going to fund not only this year's needs, but half of next year's, too." Because they asked for a three-year program. So they just bought us $10,300 worth of instruments. Now we have 15 light instruments, brand-new this year. One Yamaha, I have a piccolo, so now I can have a student in eighth grade play one, I can have a fifth or sixth grader play one. Two Yamaha flutes, because although we have a lot of flutes, some of them are beginning to see their age. And I have an New Horace sheet on every instrument. I, about seven or eight years ago, I estimated that we owned $150,000 worth of instruments. It was probably more, closer to $175,000 maybe now. So we got two Yamaha flutes, we got another trombone. They're beautiful. We bought two alto saxes. The seventh graders that are going to get them are ecstatic. "I believe in you. I'm taking good care of you." You've got the older ones. They're going to get the brand-new ones, and then the two that they've been playing will cycle down for next year's fifth grade. All right, for an extra, because right now, if an alto sax goes down, I don't have an extra one on the shelf. We get another Yamaha tenor sax, we get another bass clarinet, another euphonium, and trumpets for the other instrument this year. We have a pretty good slew of trumpets. Some of them older. Old doesn't necessarily mean bad, but this year's class of trumpet players, who's a good-sized one, and they all seem to need one. So four brand-new trumpets and two clarinets. So we have 24 brand-new instruments in the last 13 months. So I'm ecstatic. They believe in our school system. They believe in providing us with the tools. And they asked, they said, "You're not going to retire anytime soon, are you?" That needed to be one of their guarantees, and I said, "No way, man. I like it here." So I'm just excited. I wanted to share our great news with you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Given the value, do we need to accept that donation?
I don't know. I don't think we've updated that policy. If you want to accept it, just to be safe, you can do that.
Accept a motion to accept the donation from the Ween Foundation with our grateful thanks.
I'll make a motion to accept the foundation, the donation from the foundation.
We sent a nice letter thanking them.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, I was talking to Robin, we're probably going to try to do something a little more for him, too, maybe even invite him to a concert, or maybe even a future school community meeting for some more personal recognition, but we really just wanted to, you know, accept the donation tonight and share what the contributions they made.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none. All those in favor? Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Students of the Month.
And we're recognizing Students of the Month as well from Clinton High School, correct?
Right. So we'll start at the high school. So this is something new we're going to try to do once a month in our recognition meeting is recognizing Students of the Month and a Staff Member of the Month. So, Mr. Hastings, I know, I know your student can't join us today.
Our Student of the Month, Jacob Villanueva, was absent today. And if you know Jacob, he's definitely sent, because he never misses school. So had he been here, I would have read thus far, and I guess what we'll do is we will bring him back and invite him so he can have his moment in the sun, but he's a great, great kid, so. Jacob's always around. He's always volunteering. I had a little bit of a write-up, so we'll go through it. Just close your eyes and imagine Jake's movements. Lights, cameras, action. Without the commitment and dedication of Jacob Villanueva, these words could never be spoken. No Parents' Night, open house, opening day presentations, school plays, concerts, adult education, graduation, senior week, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Without Jake, it just couldn't be. He not only developed the gift and talent, the areas of sound and technology, but he has taken it to himself to train underclassmen to learn these skills as well. Jake has been a person in charge of this area since being trained in his freshman year by Connor Pyatt, and he continues to the present day. Doesn't matter what time of the year, whether it's the middle of the summer or during the school year, he's always available. He dedicates his time and service without any reward. Besides this service, he's a member of the cross-country team, a member of the National Honor Society, and he finds time to work at the Tower Hill Botanical Gardens in Boils de Mas. CHS is proud to announce junior class member Jacob Villanueva is our Student of the Month.
You want to take his?
I'll promise I'll give the certificate. I can't promise the other name.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was funny, the first time I met Jake, I think, was at the Fun in the Sun event, when all of a sudden he just like came up to me and was like, "Hi, can I take care of your audiovisual needs?" All right, so our middle school Student of the Month. You can either sit down there or stand on the side.
Camera, hit the camera. There you go.
So our Student of the Month is an eighth grader, Hannah Ward. And she's the Student of the Month for many reasons, but most of all, she will be representing the Clinton Middle School as our student ambassador to Project 351. Project 351 is a program that started seven years ago with Frankie Matos, believe it or not. And we're invited every year with 351 other cities and towns to choose a leader that will help develop and work with the community. She'll go on January 11, 13, sorry, to do a community-based project with 351 other eighth graders with Governor Baker. And then Hannah and I and Mr. Seem will come up with a school-wide community service project. And we can either go out to the community, do something in the school, or with another organization, and it might be the PTA. We're not sure yet. And Hannah was chosen by her eighth-grade teachers, as well as Mr. Seem and myself, because of her quiet leadership skills. If you know Hannah, she's very quiet, but yet she gives so much of herself all the time. She participates in the all-school band, and has for many years, and absolutely loves it. She loves working with younger children, both in the community and in her church. She's a swimmer, so she participates in a swim team outside of school. She's a Girl Scout, and there are so many other qualities that she brings that she's a perfect fit for the qualifications that they were looking for. So we are very proud to present Hannah Ward to the school committee tonight and to Dr. Meyer as our Student of the Month for the first time.
Thanks for being a great role model.
All right, Clinton Elementary School.
Ms. Silvio and I are recommending Mackenzie LeBlanc. Mackenzie is currently a second grader, and at the end of last year, Mackenzie wrote a, had a task of writing a persuasive letter to persuade someone to do something for her. Many first graders ask things like a pet, toy, a trip, or something to benefit themselves. Mackenzie wrote a letter to her dad, asking him to have a lemonade stand so she could donate the money to the troops. For her birthday, she asked for a real cash register to have her lemonade stand. She made the lemonade, for four hours, she sold lemonade one day this past summer. Mackenzie had a lemonade stand, but she raised over $500 and donated it to the troops. She is definitely a role model for Clinton Elementary School. She's going to be a future leader at the middle school and the high school, and she demonstrates great citizenship within our school and community. To Dr. Meyer and to the school committee, we present Mackenzie LeBlanc as our Student of the Month.
Congratulations. Thanks, everyone.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then our, our Staff Member of the Month is from Clinton Elementary School.
So we recommended Shelley Fendy to be our Student of the Month. Shelley is an instrumental assistant in our preschool ABA program. She works with some of our most challenging students coming in, many of them non-verbal, and have many needs to get through their day, and very difficult task. She always is happy, positive. You can see just in her day-to-day interactions in the hall that she passionately loves her job. One day recently, I was trying to fake it till I made it, helping out in the ABA program, and Shelley graciously came in and corrected everything I was completely doing incorrect, and did so in such a way that I think I will always appreciate, more so for that child. So I just want to say, she's so deserving of this recognition. She then goes home to three children and does it there, too. So we're happy she took the night off work tonight, her second job, and got her hair done. She has comments.
Shelley's a great representative of all the ABA assistants and teachers that we have. We have some fantastic programs.
And her team is here.
And our team is here to, matter of fact, to be here.
Supporters.
Supporters. So it's a fantastic team of teachers and people, and Shelley's a 10th year anniversary, matter of fact, she's been working at the school. So congratulations.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of those that were recognized tonight. You're obviously setting just such a wonderful example. We'd love to invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting as well, but if you choose to leave, we will not be offended, and we.
What I would like to do, if we could, is invite them into the hallway, so that I think Ms. Silvio is going to be my press secretary and take some pictures.
Terrific.
Then if you want to come back in, you're welcome, but you can make that decision out in the hall, and no one will judge.
Mr. Superintendent, the floor is yours.
All right, so the first, the first thing on here was the 18 Challenge. Did we have anyone representing the 18 Challenge, this watches class? I don't think that, I think she said no one was coming tonight. But the, so we've been working with the business class on the 18 Challenge, which is us challenging basically the senior class and the staff to do 18 hours of community service this year. As we mentioned, it's an opportunity to, I mentioned before, it's an opportunity to highlight some of the things that our staff and students are already doing, as well as an opportunity to encourage more staff and students to get involved. So we are looking at trying to come up with some, some prizes. We're running it from November 1st to April 30th, April 30th. We're going to type it right there. So it's something that is, one thing we talked about, the service must be something that's like not for personal gain, is kind of the way we phrase it, but meaning, the example I always said was, you know, volunteering to coach my son's soccer team shouldn't count. Not taking hours if it's something that you have to do, like it's an NHS requirement. The goal is to get 90% class participation. We said that, we asked the students what would be a good incentive. They said that the good incentive would be a Chromebook, so we said that the student who gets the most hours will give a Chromebook to. There'll also be a random drawing for everyone who participated for some sort of gift card. And then if, in May, we'll pick a date sort of in May there to do a kind of a cookout for anyone, any of the students who do the 18-hour minimum. So, so it's just something that we're trying to, trying to get launched. We're building it up on the website. This watches business class has been great. They've been helping to put together marketing materials. They've got some posters and things that they're ready to get rolling right around November 1st, so we can get it out in the, in the schools. We've got some that are geared towards students, some that are geared towards the staff, and just trying to, trying to promote the whole idea of community service and getting out and giving back. You know, I think that's one of the things that, you know, we talked about as an admin team over the summer, that we think community is one of the real important parts of Clinton Public Schools, and we thought this was a great initiative. And when I met with the kids, they, the students, they, they were on board, and they thought it was great, and they, like I said, they helped guide a lot of the decision-making on the specifics of this. So we're hoping it'll be, hoping it'll be successful, and we're hoping, hoping it'll time up. I know our students said that the first kickoff is on November 1st, so so is our community service kickoff, so hopefully we can try to maybe link some of those two and get some support for our first program as well, because we know that's an important part of the, of Clinton Public Schools. It takes a lot of, a lot of time, and a lot of, a lot of effort goes into that, and so we thought that might be a good way to kind of steer some people, as well as other, you know, the weed, weed and all those other programs in town that we can support as well. So, anyway, there you go. If you start seeing it around, that's what it is.
Well done.
The next topic was the MCAS data and accountability information. What I'm going to do is I got about a 45-minute presentation that, no, I'm just kidding. We already did it.
It just came from us.
Yeah, we, we just did it. No, we already did kind of the overview of the MCAS data. I don't think, I wasn't really planning on, on rehashing it. You guys have some of the more specific reports in your packet. If you had any specific questions, I could fill them at that time. That's really the only reason why I put it on the agenda. But I think we talked about it. You know, I think the key is, this is a new test. This is a baseline. I don't think we scored as well as we want, but I don't think we're ever going to feel, I don't think I'm ever going to feel like we scored as well as we want. We're going to be trying to make changes to improve every single year. So I think the message should be that we're, we're using this information to, you know, we're looking at this data during professional development. We're going to continue to look at it during professional development, so that we can use this information to improve.
And I know that you haven't set a date yet for, to release the individual student scores to parents. Do you, do you have an idea when that might be?
We are, we're supposed to get them tomorrow, the 24th. I would think within a week or two. I'll talk to the principals. We have an admin meeting tomorrow. on just the very final details on that, right, Karen? So we've still been working with them just on, just making sure that's all done, so I put it on because I thought we might have it, we didn't, we'll come back to it another time.
Great.
I just wanted to update the committee. I did go visit ASABET on, actually on Wednesday, the 18th. I went in the morning, met with the superintendent and the business director and the principal. We toured the building, looked at some of their programs. I was able to discuss some of the topics we had asked looking into, as things like potentially joining ASABET, if that was an option we wanted to explore, those types of topics. It seems like, I think, he seemed to feel that joining the district at this time would be a lengthy process because of the current status of their regional agreement, because the regional agreement is their original one, which means before they can really modify it, there's going to be a lot of modifications that need to take place to it, so he said, didn't say can't be done, just said that it's probably a multi-year process, if that's a direction we want to go. We did talk about the option of maybe exploring, what he was referring to is sort of an inter-municipal agreement, where we could try to at least formalize some of the parameters of a partnership, because there really isn't anything formal. So overall, I thought it was, it was a very positive meeting. I think that the, the people, you know, the administration at ASABET certainly values their partnership with Clinton, and they would like to see that continue, and we'll see where it can go. So in the coming months or so, I'll probably try to summarize all the information I got from these meetings, so that we can talk a little bit about a direction that the committee would like to see me pursue more, more formally, but I've got some ideas that I'll kind of work on and get those on paper for you in the coming meetings.
Great. Thank you.
Facilities, the Ash Street Playground, the materials have been delivered, they're there. We, we worked with the Little League to make sure that we had every single camera possibly aimed in that direction as possible. The Miguel at CES is sort of our contact person for the installation. We talked with him today, he said they should probably be here next week, so they actually said Halloween, right?
Right.
So Halloween, they're planning on coming, and removing the, the old structure, and they'll start moving right into the installation of the new structure. So I know they kind of had a window, I guess they're, they're at the tail end of their window, but they're, it's coming, and at least the stuff is here, so hopefully that's, that's done sooner rather than later. Fencing, I just wanted to update the committee that we did get a, we have some money left in the, under a warrant article for fixing fencing. We got a quote, pretty much had, it was basically the list that Mr. Bates and I and Casey came up with at the, during the facilities kind of walk-through at the beginning of the year. We had Arrow Fencing come out and kind of tore that, they were the ones that did the fencing in the front of the school. He's given me four, sorry, three quotes, and there's one other additional quote that we don't have yet, so it's going to be broken into four parts. So the, what I know from the three I have is we're not going to have enough money to do all of it, at least not under that warrant article. So once I get that, the quote for the last part, I'll try to put together some thoughts so that we can at least make sure that we, you know, we at least want to do the projects we can do with that warrant article funding, and try to get that done in a, in a timely manner, and then we can talk about the additional stuff and what that might look like.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And the fire station, I don't really have much of an update on. I do know that, you know, I still need to meet with Philadelphia, I've reached out to him, we've talked in passing, we just haven't been able to connect, but I know he's got some, some drawings that he wanted to send to me that I knew would be in a format that I wouldn't be able to read, so, or we're working on trying to get together for that.
Okay.
I think that's the fastest superintendent support you ever had.
Well done, sir. Well done. So, under the chairperson's report, we have, I think, don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to review all of the, the different reports that Masbo has done, that Karen helped pull together for us, and so we started this discussion a while back, and I'm just interested if, to know if there's interest in discussing or moving forward with looking at what Masbo might be able to do for us as a school district, in terms of looking at the procedures that we currently have, you know, reviewing what we do well, perhaps making suggestions for things that we might want to look at, or have the school department look at, in terms of different ways of approaching that aspect of the school department. So I don't know if anyone's interested in discussing it. What I, I guess what I'd like to do is ask for a motion for us to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with Masbo for, you know, one of their standard reviews of our procedures.
For the internal controls one.
For the internal controls review.
Does that cost anything?
It does. It was, I forget the exact quote now.
It was like $3,500, maybe, something along, did that affect $5,000?
Yeah, I forget, I forgot.
I thought it was $5,000 and then $7,500 if they did the technology part.
Okay, so maybe $5,000, yeah, okay.
But, and that was my only, and I would talk about this, is, I thought it was sitting there plus expenses, and I didn't see anywhere where to cap those expenses. Well, I mean, if we, I just like, you know, I, you know...
Yeah, yeah, no, well, I think we'll probably be okay, because where they are, it's not like they're coming out and they're going to spend any, but we'll, we'll double check with that. We won't, yeah, we'll get a quote, we'll get a, we'll get an estimate of that prior to entering that agreement.
So this motion will just be to open up discussions with them about, like, the getting quotes from them, or do we already have the quotes?
We already had the quote of the, we had it a couple of months ago, of the, it was $5,000, I think, went around there, and then it was more for the technology part, and then, yeah, there were some expenses, and I think that's typically like if you're, you know, if they're driving to Western Mass, staying in a hotel and that kind of stuff, but we'll, we can look into, I'm sure there's some mileage on it, it's probably not going to be a lot, but we'll get more of a firm quote on that before we do it. So the, the idea would be for us to go forward with this, with this internal controls review. I think that's the motion that you're trying to get, so that we can go ahead and just, I think, you know, I think it makes sense, I think it's a good time with, you know, with me being new, with us even getting ready to look at a new, you know, we've been meeting with the town about the new financial package, so even just having like a review like that, so as we're setting up a new financial package, we might know what type of internal controls they want us to even build in and have in there. So I think, I think the timing makes sense, I think we can afford the expense, and I think that, so I would, I would recommend it.
I agree, it's, it is the perfect timing to do it, like you said, especially with new superintendent. I think it would, I agree with that, definitely the timing makes sense. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Would you like to make the motion, then?
I just have a...
Oh, we've got another, we've got another question.
You guys do the motions down there.
That's all right.
Yeah, well, we want to share, and you guys make some motions.
My, my only question is if we, do we have the ability, if we don't choose to do the technology, if we don't make the motion for that, can we come back at that for a $2,500 expense, or is it going to be, you know, we either do it now while they're here for everything else, or do we know the answer to that?
I don't, but I tell you, if you want, what I could do, if you want to approve at least the motion for us to go forward with the first part, we can get that question and bring it back in two weeks at our next meeting or whatever, I think it's actually three because of the way the calendar falls, but we can bring it back to the next meeting and present that at that time if, if it's going to be a separate, if it's going to be an additional cost. I know what you're saying, it's basically if they do it as a package deal, is it save money?
Right.
So we can just double check on that, and then I'm sure, because we still wouldn't schedule it immediately, I mean, we're still entering into it, we want to get it on their schedule, we want to get it going, but they're not, you know, just because we say we want it, they're not going to be here tomorrow. So I think we would have time to add that on.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll make, I was just going to make the motion, let me go ahead.
Is there a second?
One second.
Mr. McIntyre, any further discussion, the motion having been made?
Is there like a next phase after this? So we just were discussing approving this like initial kind of evaluation, and then so after that's done, is there like, is there like a next, a next phase that would be discussing doing with this group? Or is this, is this, is this the...
This would be, this would be their, their like audit, their review.
Okay.
They would come in and do an internal controls review, they'd look at our, our business processes. So the difference would be, you know, as we mentioned, I think, a month or so ago when we first talked about it, you know, we'll have various audits, we'll have our audit by the DESE, which is really going to look at our expenditures in their DESE accounts. The town will have an overall audit that'll incorporate our stuff, where they'll be looking at our, our backup, and they'll be looking at some things like, you know, making sure that there's signed warrants and documentation and backup. But this will be more of a review on, on our internal controls, as far as, you know, how does, how does a PO get generated, and who's signing off on that, and how do we know there's funds available, and all those types of things. So really trying to make sure that our, our internal processes are more aligned with best accounting processes. Not that they're not, but I mean, there's, there's things that we, we think we could do better.
They're going to be like the Bobs from Office Space?
Yeah. They're going to tell me I don't even need to work here? All right.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
You could just set me up for that all the time.
On that note, I think...
Yeah. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Anything from the marketing subcommittee tonight?
Meeting.
We are, yeah, we have a first meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I know Tina and Steve are available, the rest of the group maybe, maybe not, but I figure we'll at least be able to get together and start talking about some objectives for this year, and, you know, some events that, that we want to try to do, and the frequency of the meetings and things like that, so it should, should be a good start, and then we can kind of build off it from there.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that, you know, to the degree that, you know, that organizing meeting can tie to not only our goals as a school committee, but, but also the, you know, the district improvement plan goals, I, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, work in concert with that, so I'm glad that's moving forward.
The town is actually starting, Selectman Carrigan's starting a marketing committee as well.
Oh, terrific.
So I've talked with him about, you know, I don't know, you know, maybe every, every fourth meeting or something like that, we would invite either a representative from them, you know, to come to our meeting, or maybe someone from us would go to one of their meetings just to, because we're going to have, there'll be a lot of overlap in some of our marketing objectives.
Well, and I think, too, it's, you know, Christine mentioned all of the people that came out to the Ghost and Goblins 5K, and there was a gentleman that came up to me on Saturday and said that he had just moved to Massachusetts, and he was just blown away by how the entire community came out to support this effort for the schools, and, and I said, well, you know, that's pretty common in the town of Clinton, and wasn't part of his experience, and so I think, you know, letting people know about all of these great things that are happening is, is there's sort of an organic piece to it as well, and so, you know, I look forward to working not only with the committee, but with the select boards committee as well. And policy subcommittee we have on here, but I, is there anything to report? Because I think we, weren't we...
So our goal is to, you know, go in the beginning of November, find where we're at, do the policies, and then we have to...
Way till after the conference and the group, and then we'll, then we'll get to work.
Nothing's changed there. All right. Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
Yeah, I got one thing real quick.
Mr. Bailey.
Last Wednesday, I was one of the chaperones for a trip, or an event, I guess, from the both the high school and the middle school, they went up to Mechanics Hall, which was the Marine Band from Washington DC played there, and the high school students were on one bus, I was the chaperone on the middle school bus, but I must be honest, I was, and I know people say we should expect it, but the behavior of the students, you know, both on the bus ride down, and then in the, we were right in the front row of the balcony, so you're literally overhanging the orchestra, and it was, every single child, you know, student was, was just perfect. I mean, it was, it was something, and then we were at the break, we were kind of milling around downstairs, and several people from, you know, from, they were at the event, came over, wanted to know what school they were with, and it was just, it was a proud moment, and that goes, you know, to the, to both principals and the band directors, and also the parents of these kids. It was, it was pretty cool, it was really, really an awesome event, and the behavior was good, so I appreciate it.
Excellent.
They were here for them also on Thursday morning, they played here in the high school.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they played.
They're pretty amazing.
It was 25 minutes or so, and then this, the rest of the student body went back to class, and the band students stayed in the workshop.
Really?
The auditorium was full, and they made a comment about the behavior of the staff.
It wasn't, no, it was, it was, it was good.
They did, it was fun, they did a great job.
That's it.
Mr. Superintendent.
I just want to point out, we do have one guest tonight, this is Suzanne Scallion, she's my, she's my coach through the new superintendent induction program, so she came out earlier this afternoon, and we walked around the elementary school with Mr. Rulo a little bit, and, you know, we meet on a regular basis and have our, our classroom sessions, but she wanted to come and see us in action, she picked a short one, right?
I just wanted to put in a plug for the Ensign Program and to acknowledge your participation with Suzanne Corbett, with the 26 other new superintendents from Ross State, and is highly respected by his colleagues, working his way through, as you know, the entry plan, he's done an amazing job on entry findings, I'm going to use that as a model for some of my other coaches, but I'm so impressed with Clinton, I'm really happy to be here, and the facilities are really beautiful, hats off to your crews that maintain them so beautifully, and to your kids and to your staff, but I'm happy to answer any questions after the meeting, if you might have about the program, just glad to be here with Clinton.
I just want to say on behalf of the school committee, thank you for your involvement. I, I don't begin to know how lonely a job superintendent is, but it's nice to, it's nice to know that there's, there's a seasoned colleague that he can run things by and talk over, and we appreciate it. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
So who, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, everyone.
It's always unanimous.